We don't know, we don't think we've got all the information we need to consider this item, I believe. So with members' agreement, we'd like to defer consideration of the Tram Lines Festival Report, Item 10, to either a special meeting or the next meeting of the committee. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
That's agreed.
Just a quick question. Is there any significant impact in deferring it about the officers?
No. But if any member of the public stood up just to ask about, just to hear that item, let me apologise to them. I mean, I just want to be clear, I know an awful lot of work has gone into this and some of the deadlines have been very tight. And it's no reflection on it particularly. I regret very much deferring it, but it, obviously, members feel that that's the right thing to do for this item, which is an item of significant impact and concern. Okay. There's a different discussion there, Ruth, about what sort of discussion we had about the Part Two information, but it is, it is, it is Part Two information. Apologies for absence, I've not had any and everybody's here. Exclusion of press and public, I've mentioned that if we need to. Any declarations of interest? No. Minutes of the previous meeting, held on the 15th of September and the 18th of October. Our members are happy to agree them as a true record, yes. Are there any matters arising? Other than, then on the point that I made, is that the Rose Garden Partnership Report was agreed unanimously. And we normally make a thing of saying when things are unanimous, so, which would affect that. Item five, public questions and petitions. We've received 10 public questions, no petitions. There's 30 minutes allowed for this item. So first up is, first up is, I've been asked to read some, first up is Friends of Graves Park. Caroline, welcome. Well, you're normally going there, yeah. Lisa, press a button, if you don't know.
So I'm asking these questions on behalf of the Friends of Graves Park. Are the charity subcommittee members aware of the following regarding the Norton Nursery section of Graves Park? That the Norton Nursery is part of the gift to the citizens of Sheffield by J.G. Graves, is part of Graves Park and is charitable parkland? That in 1998, this land was declared derelict and surplus to requirements by the council? And that attempts were made to sell it for a housing development? That this was eventually prevented by strong local opposition, eventually supported by the Charity Commission? And that there was an apology at the time from the council and an assurance that the land would be restored back to parkland? That the first section of this restoration, Chantry Langmeadow, was actioned by the Friends of Graves Park? And that this section opened in 2006? That the council attempted, yet again, to dispose of the Norton Nursery site in 2008, this time in an attempt to move St Luke's Hospice to the site? As once again, they insisted that it was derelict and surplus to requirements? Are they also aware that this failed partly because of the huge local opposition from the local community and beyond? Partly because of the eventual intervention of the Charity Commission? And partly because subsequently, it emerged that St Luke's could not have financially made this move? That the second section of the restoration of the site, called the Arboretum or the Secret Garden, actioned by Friends of Graves Park, opened to the public in 2016? Are they also aware that at this time, the Friends asked for the third section to be released for restoration? That as late as 2014, the council insisted that the Norton Nursery site was not being used, was derelict and was surplus to requirements? That the Parks Department, when saying that this land has been used as a depot for parks since the closure of the Norton Nursery's horticulture activities, cannot be correct if the land was declared derelict and surplus to requirements in 1998 and again in 2008? That the freedom of information responses we received make it clear that the Norton Nursery site is not and has never been designated depot land? Yet despite this, the site is being used as a depot for Graves Park and other local areas? Are the trustees aware that these other local areas are Barbersfield, Batemore Open Space, Beach of Gardens, Bent Green Playing Field, Bradway Rec, Broadfield Road Open Space, Chancet Wood Playing Field, Door Rec, Graves Park, Graves Park Animal Farm, Green Oak Rec, Green Hill Park, Herdings Park, Mears Brook Park, Millhouses Park, Totley Bent Open Space, Totley Hall Playing Field, Wurlow Brook Park, Beaver Hill Rec, Charnock Park, Freshville Park and Winfell Quarry Gardens? Twenty-two, including Graves Park and Graves Park Animal Farm. In addition, operatives working out of Norton Nurseries cover the following areas of the city and associated green spaces: Door, Totley, Wurlow, Millhouses, Bradway, Low Edges, Green Hill Norton, Batemore, Jordan Thor, Mears Brook, Healy, Gleedless, Freshville, Burleigh, Charnock and Base Green. Teams working in these areas will empty bins that have been used by the public and bring the bags of rubbish to Norton, where they can then be taken by a larger vehicle to the waste collection site in Darnall to save multiple vehicles driving to and from Darnall every day. Total of 17, including Norton. In addition, we have anecdotal evidence that rubbish is brought here from Page Hall and Concord Parks. Also, during Covid, when Encliffe Park had to be cleared of the rubbish left by the public, it was all taken to Norton Nurseries. That the Parks Department has conceded that this land needs to be restored back to parkland. This being the case, do the trustees agree that waiting for a review of depots, which could take up to five years, is not relevant since this site is not a depot? And that 25 years is far too long for the local community to wait for Sheffield City Council to honour its promise to allow the Friends of Graves Park, at their own expense, to restore this section of the park back to parkland? Finally, are the trustees aware that the next section to be restored is not currently occupied or being used for anything? And that the above activities, as well as the storage of vehicles and fuel, are all within the parts of the nurseries on the other side of the glass houses? And that the commencement of restoration would not impact on the use of the nurseries as a depot? Will the charity subcommittee please, as a matter of urgency, agree to the land being released to the Friends of Graves Park so that it can be restored back to parkland and reopened to public use with immediate effect? Thank you.
Thank you for your question, Caroline. The responses to the questions, they'll go on the website, so I've got a printed response. Elements of the Norton Nursery site have been used for the maintenance of Graves Park and other local parks in the local area prior to the amalgamation of the nursery site into the 2009 Graves Park scheme. The site is currently a part of a citywide review into how it conducts its operations across the city, and until this review is complete, the site cannot be released to be turned into parkland. Finding an alternative site at this time would be impractical and uneconomic, both in respect of the maintenance and operational aspects of running Graves Park and for providing services to the other parks in the surrounding area. We are aware of the excellent work the Friends of Graves Park have put into the Chantry Langmeadow and Arboretum, and are motivated to see further parts of the site restored to similar standards. However, we are currently not in a position to allow any volunteer groups' access to the site to conduct work due to health and safety concerns, due to the moving vehicles, COSE, HH regulations, I think it should do chemicals, PPE required. It would not be safe for members of the public to have access to this site. Further, there are a lot of vehicles, equipment and other expenses of items that need to remain in a safe unlocked area that is currently provided by the site. Then I will add, from the chair as a rider, and people, members are invited to contribute as well. The questions that you ask, I mean personally, obviously, I represent Graves Park Ward and I was involved way back in 1997, 98. I think that's an accurate description, apart from, I do not recollect, and you'll be able to educate me later, a 2014 declaration that the land was derelict and surplus to requirements. But fundamentally, I think that's a true reflection.
Am I allowed to say, I have a letter from a councillor at the time stating that in writing?
That's fine. I think that the derelict part of the argument is not a helpful argument, really. I mean, I don't regard the land as derelict. I've never regarded it as derelict. It's charitable land. The deeds say so, way back in, the argument was all about, was it or was it not? So it was recognised as charitable land. And indeed, the Charity Commission in the 2008 Scheme of Governance says it's charitable land. And we'll recollect on the tennis issue that it wasn't included in the plan, and the plan was amended because it's all part of the, of the charity. So I don't, I don't think the land's ever been surplus to requirements, certainly because it's, it's, it's parkland. In terms of giving an instruction, I don't know, I really don't know, because we haven't discussed it, we might find an opportunity to discuss it. I don't actually know, but the members of the committee definitively think about issuing such an instruction. We'd be bound to take a report from officers about it, and based on the answers I've just read out and previous answers to questions that we've asked, they would be bound to say, well, we do need to operate as it is now. And we'd be bound to, to, to think about that. I know that my colleague councillor, Ares, has had a meeting with the leader of the council and one of your representatives, and we've explained the situation about the land as, as, as we see it. What I propose is to meet with you and, and Lisa and Ruth, to go through the issues, because there are issues, I think, about the park. But I think it's common ground, I don't think there's any appetite around this in the council now to dispose of that land for housing to another charity, to find another use for it beyond charitable land. And if this is news, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't think that that is the case. I think we're all on board of, of, of keeping it within the charity and that it was given as parkland. In terms of what the Charity Commission would think and all the rest of it, we'd, we'd have to go into it. But I think, you know, there is a commitment to, to keep the land. In terms of use of it, obviously, people are saying that, officers are saying that it's needed. There is guidance from the Charity Commission, which I've, I've got here in front of me, and it does say, and this was in, when the issue was, 2013, "A charity cannot generally transfer its property to a non-charitable body or for a non-charitable purpose, e.g. charity land could not be transferred to a local authority to form part of its statutory property, even if it was to be used for purposes similar to those formally undertaken by the charity." Now, to some extent, that seems to me to meet the current use of Norton Nursery. So there's an issue to be explored. And as Chair of the Committee, I'm very grateful to, I'm very happy to explore that with you. Lisa might have something to add. I don't know whether members round the table want to add anything in terms of the basic reassurance. I mean, obviously, the park does need operational land, and probably, there wouldn't be a problem about us cooperating with the council corporately, our main funder, to deliver services or to cooperate with other bodies to maintain equipment and to buy tractors and things like that. So it's not quite clear cut, probably in the word "generally", there is a discussion to be had. I invite anyone else who wants to add anything to my, yep, sure. Frank?
It's not so much adding as asking another question. First of all, thank you for bringing the questions, Caroline, and I do apologise, I had to cancel my visit, I know we were going to go and look at the site, but we've got it back in the calendar. So I had a question really, just about the answer, which talks about the council-wide review into how it conducts its operations across the city. Is that the community buildings review? Is that the same thing? That's what it is? Okay.
I thought it was the review of depots.
Right. So I think, I know the community buildings review, it probably isn't a quick piece of work, whether it's, I think in your question, you talk about it potentially being five years. I hope it's not going to be quite as long as that, though. But I just wanted to clarify that, which will aid my understanding when I do come and have the visit and have a proper look. Thank you.
I'll just say, echo what councillor Beldman's just said. We're obviously, in this committee, we're not in a position to make a decision on it today. We've only just seen this question, I mean, obviously, we've submitted in advance. I guess it's just fair to recognise that the ongoing question about what the Norton Nurseries is, an ongoing piece of work. I guess what we can ask is that, you know, that's brought on as quickly as possible so that some decision can be made. And yes, I am assuming it is tied in necessarily with the review of depots, because in reality, you know, the council is using this, at least for the maintenance of Graves Park. So there's got to be some plan around that, that's actually got to work in practice. I don't know any of the details of that, but, you know, let's just hope we can move this on sooner rather than later, because I'm aware that Norton Nurseries has been mentioned before in committee meetings. I think it is also on our work plans, which is an exciting item, isn't it, at some point?
I think, I think there might be a proposal to put it on in light of the questions. Yeah, I think it is a point from me. Firstly, when it's been called a depot review, then it's principally been looking at Manor Lane and Stanleyford Road, and can we piggyback an arrangement onto that? Then there's a community building review. They've been going on for years. And years. It's been the answer for four years at least, maybe longer. Anyway, Lisa?
I think it's the council's strategic accommodation review now, which includes the community buildings.
Give it, who's, which committee and which of, who's leading on it? Who's the, who's the director?
Nathan. Yeah.
Nathan.
Nathan is here, actually. I don't know if you'd like me to just invite him up for two minutes, just to give you a quick overview, which might be helpful.
Yeah.
Because we're lucky enough to have him here.
So you're right, Lisa's right in terms of the accommodation review, the five-year period is an estimate of time for all of the accommodation. Within that accommodation review, there's a, there's parts of, the main sections are the operational estate, which covers the places where we work from, to all of our staff, which includes depots, office spaces. There's a section around community buildings, there's a section around service lodges. All in all, across the operational estate, random, there's about 800 buildings, ranging from a six-by-six-foot shed up to, you know, the status of buildings like the town hall. I hope that clarifies the, the properties that are in scope and the timescale for the accommodation review.
Sorry.
The question, sorry, Ruth, was the, you said which committee, Strategic Resources or?
Yeah.
Finance Committee. Finance Committee normally has property stuff.
Sorry, Strategic Resources Committee.
Well, that's at least everybody involved in it then. Sorry, Lisa, you were going to add some light, I hope.
Thank you. I just wanted to pick up on the point, what Caroline and yourself made about the Charity Commission. So the council is currently in dialogue with the Charity Commission, explaining the use of Norton Nurseries. We started that correspondence back in 2016, that then fell away. We're now dealing with someone else at the Charity Commission and trying to ensure that the information that is held about the use of that part of Graves Park is accurate, but it's not been designated as a depot, it is still designated as charitable parkland.
So, well, I think that concludes the answer to the questions, I'd rate, and we'll be in touch to arrange a meeting when we can sort of like sit round the table and go in it. And if any member of the committee wants to join me, they'd be very welcome. Okay. Next up, we've got Ruth now. Ruth, my apologies, you gather we're not taking tram lines now, but you may wish to ask your questions and some more at the appropriate time. But thank you for coming to ask your questions, and thank you, Caroline, too.
Anyway, I'm quite happy there's a delay, there's more opportunity for more things to happen. So yes, I'm, I'm here asking as a Sheffield citizen, I guess, on behalf of S.O.S Sheffield. But also, this has been, tram lines and Hillsborough Park has been an issue which I've been following for probably about four years and in liaison with lots and lots of interest groups and local people down in Hillsborough, who are always a complete delight and great to work with, they're so responsive as a community and so, yeah, engaged, I guess. So my questions are about tram lines. I recognise that a lot of work has been going on, but overall, it is disappointing to see yet another rather cheerleading report on tram lines, that in line with all reports that have gone before, fail to address considerable local Hillsborough community concerns. In fact, once again, it appears that public and private and corporate interests are being conflated, whilst community concerns are being ignored. So it's claimed a comprehensive review of licensing arrangements has taken place with, between the council and tram lines. What role then have local community and park user group stakeholders, plus local citizens, played in this comprehensive review? What was learned and taken on board by all parties?
To a reasonable list of community concerns that have been consistently raised, four years or more at least, includes impacts on and mitigations for local businesses, urine-filled gardens and ginnels and smelly streets, other antisocial behaviour, street drunkenness, preloading litter, et cetera, a range of parking traffic and public transport issues and for better end-of-day dispersals, re-entry for all as a right rather than discretionary gift and favour for local residents, and prohibitive drink-food costs from largely chain-type festival stall holders for its consequently captive audience, disputes about noise levels and the disturbances they bring, a range of other evident pre- and post-festival impacts. So which of these or any other general festival management arrangements that concern local residents were considered for the comprehensive review and are suitable for building into new licence arrangements? Three, what do officers and councillors know about tram lines in-house resident survey and what is said in feedback sessions? Why is it mentioned in this report without mentioning any findings and the influence these might or might not be having? Indeed, why aren't the findings public? Why isn't the appropriateness of a corporate partner's own survey not questioned? What information have officers gathered themselves or understood from petitions, public questions, local councillor insights, lack representations and the fact it's consistently all over social media year on year? Why does the council continue to ignore Hillsborough residents' wide-ranging concerns? What do they need to do to be heard? Should they spend a year like Graves Park campaigners have, very strongly pushing the council, using loud and powerful, well-known local voices, holding a few protest-type public meeting events, for example? Or should they plan to do things like Pickett or undertake other disruptive activities? Would that kind of action be better heard by our council? Does people at the heart of all we do, I mean tram lines people, is it more boring for officers to talk to local residents, businesses and groups and understand their concerns and undertake the quite difficult, I think, long-term work on addressing those than it is to continue to block their voices or engage with, sorry, that is it more boring for officers to do that than it is to engage with a rapidly growing global business with private equity backers and an increasingly complex corporate structure? Why has the Park Life Festival in Heaton Park, Manchester, had a community impact team in place since 2015? Plus an event-community consultation group dealing at a detailed level with the local community impacts, when Sheffield and Hillsborough doesn't have anything like this? Why has Portsmouth Victorious Festival, so run by Superstruct, got re-entry rights for all that are championed by their local council, as protective of local businesses, when tram lines does not? What are the implications for local residents as well as festival-goers of a shift to a right-to-occupy licence from a shift to a premises, a premises licence? And does this have any impact on, in the context of charitable status? Might the council require all tram lines reports from now on to directly address community concerns and the progress that is being made on these issues? Will the committee refuse to endorse work towards new licence arrangements before community and, before its clear community and local stakeholder concerns have been fully discussed with those involved and appropriate consultation carried out to consider them as potential inclusions for the new licence? I note that this is exactly what the relevant committee did when it was discovered that no stakeholders had been properly consulted for the development of the MUGA proposals in Hillsborough Park. That is, the committee delayed MUGA progress until basic consultation work had been done with stakeholders. I note the £500 to be donated to Friends of Hillsborough Park, except Friends of Hillsborough Park has folded precisely because they felt dispirited by the council failure to engage. Presumably, the Walls Garden Group will now benefit from this £500. Have our council perused tram lines, multiple companies' latest submitted accounts? I also note on the Hillsborough Park accounts, on another item, that Friends of Hillsborough Park are bigged up as being at the centre of park management arrangements. If this was ever true, it's not been true for a while, has it? What do the council intend to do about the inaccuracy, actually, in those, those reports on the, on the local accounts? And about new Hillsborough Park arrangements with the demise of Friends of Hillsborough Park? Who controls tram lines trust? And what are the management arrangements? Do they involve local residents and stakeholders? What information is made public about their donations and work? What information is made public about their donations and work? For clarity, um, in answers, I'm not interested in hearing more justifications about tram lines, still less. More of our council acting as corporate cheerleaders. Uh, these answers simply for me act to obscure and block ongoing legitimate and persistent community concerns. And as though Hillsborough just simply has to put up with it for the sake of wider Sheffield. These answers sometimes also assume or seem to want to assume that it's a zero-sum debate of for or against tram lines. When I don't believe this is the case at all, it's about how we better live with these corporate partners. And I don't really want to hear about what members of councillors' families think of tram lines, which we've heard before. I've also had some perfectly reasonable letters from committee chairs in response to previous inquiries and questions that I've asked. Some of those people are sitting around the table here. However, I cannot recall a time when committee members or an officer report has taken up in any serious or meaningful way the community concerns I'm talking about. Nor have I heard positive proposals being brought forth in public in committee meetings to tackle concerns. Thank you. Sorry there was so much in there.
Well, thank you Ruth for reading them out so well. Because we've deferred the item and because you've had a copy of the printed responses, uh, I, I don't know if it's helpful. But I will read out the answers if, if, if you like.
Have I had a copy of the printed?
I don't know. No, not yet.
Not yet.
Ah, right. Well, there is a writ, there, there's a, um, a response that's been prepared for me and, uh, I can go through it if you would like. Right. Question one. The report states a current licence agreement has been in place since two thousand and eighteen and following review that started in twenty twenty-two, coupled with the issues experienced following adverse weather in twenty twenty-three, a comprehensive review of this licence agreement is staying in place. This refers to the right-to-occupy licence agreement, not the premises licence for licences, licenciable activities. The review of the agreement focused on wet weather mitigations and event cancellation procedures from lessons learned from the twenty twenty-three festival. As stated in the report, there has been no public consultation regarding the licence agreement as in this case for detailed content of all event licence agreements that the council issues. Question two, community concerns were collated and responded to after the event in July as detailed in September twenty twenty-three reports. And have been considered in the report presented to the committee, was to be presented to the committee today. There, there has not been a list of community concerns consistently raised for four years. Some issues such as re-entry were not raised until the twenty twenty-two event. The park has never been damaged to the extent it was in twenty twenty-three and reinstatement has usually happened within a matter of days. Please see the answer to question five, which sets out the role of the tram lines residents team. In twenty twenty-three, the residents' parking scheme was extended to include more roads patrolled by stewards and there is a dedicated residents' parking page on the tram lines website. Question three, the residents' feedback is on the tram lines website. Question four, the residents' views are being heard. Tram lines has put measures in place to mitigate concerns wherever feasible, E G parking enforcement. The council receives a significant number of complaints from the twenty twenty-three event and the report considers a response to the concerns raised. And question five, residents', uh, team is a response from tram lines. During the build, event and break, tram lines have a dedicated residents' liaison team that answers phone calls, emails and in-person visits at their base, at their HASSA and occasionally reaching out and visiting a residence address. The residents' team has been doing this since we arrived in Hillsborough in two thousand and eighteen. It's a full-scale, month-long operation and the team has direct contact with the council's event management team and are on-site event control. Should an incident arise, they find out the full details and then raise it with Events Control or go directly to the agency the query belongs to. For E G, if there is traffic management issue, they will log it with Events Control, voit it with the external traffic management company and communicate any recurring issues to the events management team until the situation is resolved. They will then follow up with the residents, uh, to update them on the situation. If a resident gets in touch about sanitisation issues or litter, then our residents' team will go through the proper channels and speak to our litter picking team. This team will then clean the park and a separate dedicated team will cover the surrounding streets and departure routes. If any residents call our resident liaison team with a complaint about litter, the team will be deployed to resolve the issue. Outside of when we are in the park, members of the event management team directly handle anything residents-related. This includes, but is not limited to, handling residents' queries, organising and attending residents' drop-in sessions twice a year, issuing pre-event comms to keep residents updated on our plans and managing our residents' tickets and fulfilment. Victorious Festival, re-entry. This festival has in excess of five large entry and exit gates and can be accommodated a transient crowd compared to the two fixed exits which tram lines has. Victoria's site is significantly larger than ours, spanning nearly all of the South Sea seafront, which allows their entrances and exits to split the amount of people efficiently and deal with queues. To fulfil this, they shut surrounding roads of the site for the duration of the show to create sterile areas. This is something we would not want to do around Hillsborough Park as residents wouldn't be able to move around freely. Question six, there is no change to the basis on which the licence agreement is being offered. The terminology is being standardised to help with understanding and this is explained at paragraph one six of the report. A premises licence does not give an automatic right to occupy and use the land. The right to occupy New Zealand is granted further to a different type of licence, licence to occupy. Under this licence to occupy, S T C as licensor will grant Tel the licensee with a right to occupy Hillsborough Park for a period and for a specific purpose, i.e. for staging the event. In return, Tel will pay S T C a licence fee. For ease, this report refers to the licence to occupy as a licence agreement. Question seven, there is a current process for tram lines to engage with residents as set out in answers question five. Comprehensive consultation was carried out regarding the Hillsborough activity. As the charity's subcommittee in March twenty twenty-three, the committee requested that further consultation should be carried out, particularly with young people. The minutes of that meeting state agrees to defer the report to a later meeting to allow further work to be carried out, including further briefings for committee members on the exempt appendices to the report. Feedback received as a result of the report taken to committee in September twenty twenty-three and the subsequent emails received to S T C and feedback from elected members, including Hillsborough Ward councillors, have been included in this report, for instance, allowing a specific amount of funding to make improvements to Hillsborough Park and giving customers an option to make a voluntary donation to the Hillsborough Park charity. That's in the report that we've deferred today. And it does say that tram lines are going to make a donation of five hundred pounds and, and per annum to the, oh, Hillsborough Park volunteers. The last published report, this is question ten, to the Hillsborough Park charity, well for the financial year ended thirty first of March twenty twenty-two and we are accurate at the time of the submission, they will not be retrospectively amended. Question eleven, who controls the tram lines trust? This is a question for tram lines, there is a page on the tram lines website that gives some information. And there's a link to the webpage. My, my apologies because we've got the answer to the questions and I got the answers to the questions as prepared about a few hours, a few hours ago earlier today. You get them after I've answered them, so to speak, with, because, and to be fair, I, I had some bits in sometimes. And, eh, anyway, because it's a bit stilted reading out, um, a question, although we're trying to be accurate. So my apologies for that. Just on the accounts, of course, we're going back quite a while. That's the thing, thirty first of March twenty twenty-two. And I've thought about that and, and what I tend to feel is it was sort of like accurate at the time, it may not be accurate now, but with the passage of time, it, it, it's not material to the finances. Which is what we mainly reported on. So on balance, I think we'll, we'll, we'll leave it be. But we've got session on the accounts and we'll, um, we, and we have a chance to ask the independent examiner if somebody wants to ask what they think about that. I don't know if anybody's got anything to add. Couple of observations from me would be, I know that France committee is looking at engagement generally with the, with the publicity, but I want to say something. I know it's, um, meetings about engagement, about reports, but that's how the council tends to operate. Hopefully gets to a, a good conclusion. So Fran might want to say something about that. We're equally anxious to engage with Friends of Parks Group through Richard's committee insofar as it affects charity. I think it's generally agreed we need to improve. Fran, I don't know if I'm allowed.
I'm not sure. I can add much that you don't already know, Ruth, because I know you do pay attention very much to, uh, what goes on at the governance committee. Yeah, I suppose I've got another question, I'm afraid, which relates to the answer though, which is, I think in the original papers that were sent out, it does refer to what's in the licence agreement. And I think that's the kind of paper that we were hoping to see before coming to the decision today. That, that doesn't actually refer to relationships with the community and so on. It was my understanding that things like that would be within the licence agreements or things like number of tickets issued and things like that. So because we haven't seen it yet, I'm not clear if that kind of detail is within the agreement. So it'd be useful again before, you know, we can't take these kinds of decisions on the licence until we've seen that kind of clear information, I think. Which even if, you know, even if it's not everything we would want it to be, we need at least a clear idea of it. So it'd be helpful when we see the agreement to, or to understand whether that kind of information is within, within the agreement.
We don't know what we don't know and we've only come to the conclusion we don't know something.
Uh, the report, um, details how many, um, resident ticket schemes were made available. At two point four. It's not a direction from the council to, um, to tram lines to state how many tickets they make available. But what, what we, what we do know is that tram lines do more than most event organisers in terms of their ticket schemes and increased it significantly in, uh, twenty twenty-three from twenty twenty-two, um, to three thousand nine hundred. Not all of those tickets were taken up, so we do believe that there are sufficient tickets made available, um, of different categories.
I think the problem is seeing, seeing that that kind of thing is addressing community concerns. I mean, it's SOP. It's, the issue is addressing community concerns. The majority of them, I wouldn't want to go to tram lines.
I'm imagining towards saying it's not, it, maybe it should be one of the things we consider a bit more of a debate, but it's, at the moment, we've given our answers.
Take it. Communities allowed to present their concerns on their own terms. But thank you.
You've, second it. Okay, so Douglas.
Just, just going to ask if you've got any questions, if you could circulate them round the committee, because we've got them here in writing, but not in advance. So if we could do that, that's helpful.
Yeah. I mean, they've only, yeah, it's a, it's a performance, I grant you that. Everybody will have done their best, I'm sure, and, and of course it's the time to prepare them. But they, they will get published on the webpage as well, um, after the event. So there are a number of questions which have been asked to read out. Have we got anyone else to ask a public question? No, right. Someone's asked me to, I read them out. The question has asked me to read, the question has asked me to read them out, so I think. Yeah, that's the auditor, uh, or the independent examiner, let's not pick it. So, um, what I'm, what I'm, right. Somebody called Lucy, I was asked, there is a lot of social media and Facebook noise in a survey that has a hundred and eighty-five responses carried out by a local councillor. Given that over eight thousand people from Hillsborough attended the tram lines, does the committee think that a hundred and eighty-five responses is representative of the feeling, feelings in Hillsborough? Or is it just a campaign against tram lines? Mark Taylor said, I'm in favour of the tram lines in Hillsborough Park, but I want to know, are there improvements to the park just out of tram lines? What benefit will it, will people who use the park every day see from the improvements? And how much will be spent in the park? From Adam Goodson, what happens if the committee doesn't approve this new agreement? Does it mean that tram lines will move out of the park? If it does, where will it go? Will it still be in Sheffield? Lisa Norman, I want tram lines to stay, but I also want to know if Hillsborough Park will be used for more music events like Arctic Monkeys? Or will it be for tram lines, I think residents will be happy if we knew it was once planned and set dates. What will happen if it rains like it did last year? Is the committee satisfied the lessons are being learnt? There's a report from Lisa Hood. The report about tram lines says that Hillsborough Park is there to provide a public park and recreation ground to improve the public's conditions of life. It seems that around four thousand people attended tram lines last year. Previous. Forty thousand, yeah, forty thousand, forgive me. Previous report says fifty-eight percent of the people who attended were from Sheffield, forty-five percent had under-sixteens in their year, a group. This is a very family-friendly, friendly festival and the only opportunity I get to attend a festival in Sheffield with my children. Does the committee agree that there should be more friendly music events for the city and the people of Sheffield? So I don't have to travel outside the city. Manchester has a sound of the city in the centre, as a music-loving family, we are ask, asking you please to keep tram lines in Sheffield. Anthony Gle, can the committee please set out what engagement tram lines do with local residents? How many tickets they give away now? Does this compare to other events like Arctic Monkeys? Stacy Field, how, Field Send, how much does the council pay to tram lines for them to have a festival in the city? Does it cost us as council taxpayers? I love tram lines, but it shouldn't cost us as residents to have it. And finally Caroline Brode, if the weather is as bad as last year, will tram lines take the decision to cancel the event? Determined by whether tram lines will lose money, I want the event to stay in the park, but also the park to be protected. They'll get a written response as set out on there. And so this concludes public questions and petitions on which I apologise have overrun. Item six is that there has been no members' questions. Item eight, I propose with members' agreement to go to item eight because we've got the independent examiner possibly being here for hours. So I've got to it, my apologies, sir. So we've got a report from the Director of Finance and Commercial Services, pages thirty-seven to three one-four in the report pack on the charity accounts that we have to file. For the webcast, would you like to introduce yourselves?
Thank you Chair, I'm Jane Wilby, Head of Accounting.
I'm Harry Walton, Assistant Finance Manager.
So today we've got the, um, sorry, we've got legal.
It's all right.
So sorry Sarah. Sorry about that. Today we're presenting the, uh, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three charity accounts, uh, to the charity subcommittee. We do have some slides to, uh, append the accounts to make the subject matter a little bit more easy to talk through. So, um, I'll take you through the, the first set and then Harry will talk you through some of the further detail that's included within the set of accounts. Uh, we also do have our independent auditor online to answer any questions should they come at the end of the presentation. So for, um, this year's charity accounts, we do have several charities as the council and we are the sole trustee for those, uh, for the charity. And we have an obligation as part of the Charities Act to prepare financial statements in accordance with, um, the accounting regulations, which is the, uh, SORP, which standard, um, accounting regs. There are different requirements for each different size of charity, so each charity must prepare annual accounts. All registered charities must prepare a trustee, an annual trustee's annual report. If we have a gross income of over £25,000 in the financial year, you must file the accounts and an annual report with the Charities Commission. A gross income of over £10,000 must complete and file an annual return with the commission. And a gross income of less than £10,000, you have to complete the annual return for certain items. So we have 10 months within the financial year-end to submit the charity accounts. And only charities that have got gross income of more than £25,000 are required to have their accounts independently examined. So an audit is only needed when the gross income is over a million pounds. So for 2022-23, we have prepared the accounts, finance officers, so Harry has diligently prepared them in accordance with the Statement of Recommended Practice. And the ones that are requiring submission to the commission that have over £25,000 income and have had the independent examination presented today are listed in this list below. There's 12 different sets of accounts there. The last three are actually new sets this year that have gone above the £25,000 income threshold for the year. So as we've said, the accounts have been subject to a thorough independent examination by our external auditor, Roger Spencer. And the auditors have confirmed there is no matters to bring to the trustee's attention to enable proper understanding of the financial statements to be reached. And full details of that, signed by Roger Spencer, can be found within each set of accounts. Within the accounts, there are some key elements. So much as you see with any financial statements, you will see an income and expenditure account. Amanda, can you just move to the next, oh, Alan, can you move to the next slide? Thank you. The income and expenditure accounts in the Statement of Financial Activities. So that's all the funds that we receive, including donations, grants and all the income from activities such as events or rents associated with charitable activities. So the breakdowns to all that are included in the notes to the accounts. Depreciation on assets also forms part of expenditure costs. So in the balance sheet, you'll see the overview of the charity's assets, property, investments and the liabilities of the debts and obligations of the charity. You will also see the difference between normal financial statements and charity accounts is the restricted and unrestricted funds, where there is donor imposed restrictions on income for individual items. We have also committed as part of this year's accounts exercise to do a fixed asset revaluation in 24-25. Whether that falls into next year's accounting cycle or the following year depends on the timing really, but we will be doing that in the near future. On the next slide, you will see Sheffield City Council contributions in general. So to each park, we pay a revenue grant to the charities and we also have made a capital grant to the charities as well. So in total, the contribution is almost 1.4 million in the 22-23, which was more than the previous year. And you can see a lot of that was due to additional capital expenditure that's been paid to each of the different charities. So the next slides go through each of the different accounts in a little bit more detail. So Harry's just going to pull out some of the key movements between years and some of the key highlights within each sets of accounts.
Thanks, Jane. So in the top left-hand corner, you'll see a bit about each park, the location, what each park contains. So for Graves Park, we've got woodland areas, streams, lakes, golf course, bowling greens and also the animal farm. And then for each of the parks, there's a section on the slide for the charity objective. So it's quite a common theme, but the charity objective for Graves Park is the provision and maintenance of a park with the object of improving the conditions of life for the public. So some key performance overview for the park. It was a successful year for the animal farm, so income increased on the animal farm by nine to one thousand pounds from the previous year, which was due to increased sales at a gift shop largely. Other highlights in the year to note, in 2022, Graves Park hosted the Country Show Event. So that was the first year that that was hosted since Covid. So next slide please. For Norfolk Park, Norfolk Park's located to the south of Sheffield City Centre. It has woodland areas, family picnic and play areas, sport pitches and also the centre in the park building. It's got a very similar charitable objective to improve the conditions of life and the provision and maintenance of a recreation ground. So in terms of key spend, there was £37,000 capital spend to install an access ramp at the Arbuthon Lodge. And in terms of revenue expenditure, there was an 11 grand increase to repair and maintenance costs. This is largely due to the centre in the park building, which was retrofitted. It's office space for the Parks and Countryside Department. The move of that department from Moorfoot to its new basin centre in the park, that was completed in spring 2023. And in terms of highlights for the year, Norfolk Park hosted the Queen's Platinum Jubilee celebrations on the 2nd of June and also the Sheffield Fair on the 29th of August 2022. Onto Hills Park. So it's situated three miles north west of the city centre. It features a fishing lake, a bowling green with pavilion, a walled garden and a playground. The charity's objective is the provision and maintenance of a public park with the object of improving the conditions of life for the public. The key spend in the year, there was large capital expenditure in 22-23 due to three significant projects, so the Hillsborough Park development, where £434,000 was spent on things such as footpaths and drainage. Also the Hillsborough Wheels Park project, which was the installation of an all-new wheel track for use by all the community with British Cycling contributing to that. £268,000 was spent there. And also capital works to reconfigure the Hillsborough Library entrance, £34,000 spent. So in terms of highlights in the year to note, the park hosted tramlines festival in 2022. That was a dry year, thankfully. I attended that one. Moving on to Weston Park, which is again near the city centre. It's brought about the Sheffield University, Sheffield Children's Hospital and the City Museum. Slightly different charitable objectives in terms of the wording, but a very key theme being the provision of facilities for recreation or the leisure with the object of improving the condition of life. So in the year, revenue expenditure increased by £30,000 from the previous year due to increased tree works and park repairs. But the increased expenditure was also matched by increased income to the park. So weddings returned to the park, other events such as the Weston Fair on the 22nd of May, which is mentioned in the green section. And also increased income from a renegotiated licence for the ice cream pitch, which we've seen in a few of the other parks as well. So onto the next park, Firth Park, which is located in the north of Sheffield. It also contains the Firth Park Building in the accounts, which is situated on site, which contributes to the charitable objective, as I've pulled out there, that part of the objective is to advance education and provide facilities in the interests of social welfare for the inhabitants. Performance overview and key spend, 24 grand capital spend on the Firth Park clock tower, which was funded from SCC capital receipts. Also increased repairs and maintenance spend on the Firth Park Building. £15,000 spent to redecorate the nursery in the children's centre. And that was funded by SCC maintenance funds, which have been set aside. Highlights in the year, there were small events held in the park for the Christmas lights and Eid Festival. Moving through to Encliff Park, located in the west of Sheffield. The charity objective, it states the object of the charity are public walks in leisure gardens. So in terms of performance overview and key spend, £25,000. Events income was received in the year, so a lot of events resumed in the park after the pandemic. Rent income also increased by £15,000 due to renegotiation of the ice cream pitch contracts. So just to mention some of those events, the park hosted a number of running events such as the Sheffield Round Run, the 10-10-10, 10K, the weekly park runs, as well as the annual Fake Festival, which is a music event for cover artists. And that took place on the 14th of May 22. Onto Richmond Park in the south-east of Sheffield. It has a football pitch, BMX track, playground, multi-use games area, woodland, dipping pond, bowling green. Similar charity objectives to the other parks. And key spend would be £10,000, capital spend on flood management works. So a bit of detail on that below. The park suffered from flooding in previous years due to poor drainage and clay soils and natural springs on the site. So yeah, the capital project intended to, intended to correct this problematic flooding by creating sustainable urban drainage system, shallow basin on the side of the old playground and then guarding the water through the park through a series of swales linked in with the watercourse that runs along the side of the park. So that project was completed in spring 2023, which has really contributed to the park. Onto High Hazels Park. Sorry, there is quite a lot of these. It's 12 in total. So High Hazels is in Darnall area. It contains a cafe, children's playground, central garden, cricket and football pitches. Similar charity objective, key spend in the year, seven grand capital expenditure as part of the Sheffield-wide tarmac and project. So this is one of the parks, I think, which is, ah, sorry, I'm correcting myself. Highlights in the year, the dog training company is now operating from the former bowling green area. And also the holiday activities and food programme took place in May 2022. So they held an event in the park. City Hall Gardens is slightly different to the other accounts. So it's located next to the city hall and the objective, I'll read out. The income arising from eight properties after costs involving the repair, maintenance and other incidental expenses is to be applied 50% in the upkeep of the City Hall Gardens or towards the upkeep of any other charitable park or recreation ground held upon trust by Sheffield City Council. The remaining 50% will be transferred to the trustees of and applied in accordance with the objectives of the Spirit of Sheffield Children's Trust. So this year, the grant payable to that charity, the Spirit of Sheffield Children's Trust, is £17,522. So on to the three parks which are new for producing full sets of financial accounts. Earl Marshall Recreation Ground, which is also known as Osgood Park, which is located in the Pittsmore area of North Sheffield. It has a similar charity objective to the other parks. And the reason for it being brought to the attention this time around is there was more income. It had gone over the £25,000 threshold. Part of that was due to seven grand capital spend, so increased to the restricted fund. And that was split between the tarmac and projects and also the play improvement project. Another new park, if your attention is Glen Howe Park, which is situated in Warne Cliff Side. It's largely a woodland area, spanning 19 acres in the valley of the Tinker Brook. The charitable objective for the park is held in trust for the perpetual use thereof by the public for exercise and recreation. So a reason for that, going over the £25,000 threshold this year, 12 grand repairs to the park lodge. So the ceiling fell through, unfortunately. And also increased spend on tree work, which is a common theme throughout parks and countryside areas. And finally, the Winkerbank Wood Recreation Ground is new this year. So it boasts a playground and multi-use games areas, as well as the woodlands and the Winkerbank Hill Fort. Similar charitable objective and there's 10 grand capital spend as part of the levelling up fund to improve the playground and woodland paths for the local community. So as part of recognising that capital spend and producing a set of accounts this year, we've been consistent with our treatment of the other parks and we've recognised part of the valuation of the land is eight, six thousand pounds. So you'll see that in the accounts this year. And highlights in the year, activities to note, Friends of Winkerback Hill, they've been active in running volunteer days, spent clearing the light area around the hill fort and cutting back saplings. So that's all 12 parks for you. Any questions?
Just a note as well, so post-publication of the accounts on letters of representation, we did note that there was some amendment to be made to the wording within the letters of management representation that have been necessary to reflect the government, new governance arrangements. So the letter refers to the members of the committee as being individual trustees, whereas actually the council is a sole trustee and the committee is acting on behalf of the charity. So legal colleagues have provided some alternative wording to reflect the changes to that. So new copies will be issued to the chair. So the request really is to, for approval to be given to the Chair of the Charity Subcommittee to sign the Statement of Accounts, trustee report and letters of management representations to conclude the independent examination. Thank you.
Jane, can I just check up, and have we just cleared that with Mr Bailey? It's like changing to the wording, yeah. So what I propose, members, is, as we've got Mr Bailey, he might have been here for a good length of time. My apologies again, sir, is to invite any questions that we now have over the independent examiner and then go on to the officers. So has any member got any questions for the examiner? Yes, councillor Belvin.
I'm not sure who this is a question to, I'm very sorry. So it might be, not clear which. Well, first of all, just on page 189, the notes to the financial statements, which I think are for High Hazels Park. You've actually got notes for Firth Park there. It's in the middle of the, I think it's a standard wording, so it probably just needs High Hazel, Firth Park changed into High Hazels. But that was just something I noticed along the way. The question was more about where additional funds have been raised. So for example, in Firth Park, the Friends of Firth Park raised funds through the Economic Recovery Fund, some of which were spent in Firth Park on improving that in terms of new tables and chairs and so on. Should that be, I appreciate that the money didn't flow through the council or flow through the charity account, but it has resulted in extra kind of assets, if you like, in the park itself. Should they be noted somewhere within these accounts? Because there's nothing in there at the moment and I'm not really clear how that should be reflected.
I'll probably refer to Belvin for further advice on that. So yeah, I think you're right in terms of if the money's flowed to the Friends of group and it's been expended by the Friends of group, it would be captured within that particular set of financial statements. Whether we would like to note that, to reference it in the charity accounts is probably something that we could do if Belvin thinks that would be appropriate.
I suppose it's whether or not it's material to the accounts. It's no problem to add it as a note because it's already, something like that just clarifies what's happening. At the moment, I don't know the value that we're talking about.
Do you know, Fran?
So to answer the question, I think the answer is yes, we could include the note.
I don't know the value off the top of my head, but we certainly have that information, yes.
And was it current to this particular financial year, bearing in mind we're talking about? Yeah, 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 certainly. Okay. So I've got a couple, just a couple of questions, I think. So thank you, Mr Bailey, for your work on this. I mean, you have given an unqualified opinion upon your examination. But if there was anything in terms of practice or improvement you'd wish to draw to our attention, you'd be very welcome to do it now.
Okay, I think the main thing is the item that's been mentioned already in that there really needs to be some valuations to take, or revaluations to take place next year so that we're clear on the values of the properties, because some of them are quite significant. So I think there should be clarification there. Other than that, I think in terms of systems, we've seen quite an improvement this year. There's some expenditure items that couldn't be found, but Harry's aware of that and we're looking to improve in the situation for next year. It was quite minor.
Is this an area of work that your firm, I've not had a chance to look, but is it an area of work you specialise in? Are you specialising in the examination of charity accounts? Or is it just a bit of the business, so to speak?
Oh, no, no. Yeah, Roger Spencer's a small, going on medium-sized firm based in Nottingham. We've specialised in housing association charities for the last 20 years. So and my main portfolio of clients is charities and not-for-profit organisations where we carry out independent examinations and carry out audits for varying sizes of charities, anything from a turnover of less than twenty-five up to our largest charity which has a turnover of thirty million. So yeah, we do specialise in charities.
And do you do other councils' charity accounts then where the council is a corporate trustee? And if that's the case, is the way that Sheffield does this work as a corporate trustee, is that typical, so to speak?
It is because we have a similar one with Nottingham City Council.
Thanks, that's my question. Can I thank you and I, oh, just a minute. Oh, yeah, sorry, sorry, Zahir, yes, I did see you and then pressed on.
No, it's fine, maybe my questions Jane might be able to answer anyway. So I just, I just want to confirm. So in terms of producing the annual accounts, we only have to do them if the expenditure is above twenty-five thousand, is that correct?
We have to prepare financial, a record of the accounts for every charitable organisation that we look after. So regardless of the expenditure or the income threshold, it's only above twenty-five thousand that we have to prepare the financial statements to submit to the charities committee. So I think, as I said in one of the earlier slides, if it's over ten K, we have to prepare the financial statements and submit certain items as part of the return. And then below that, we've just got an obligation to sort of make sure that we're recording the accounts in general. So there are a few other accounts that have not appeared on this list that the council is the trustee for, that we can provide some details on the twenty-two, twenty-three accounts for those particular charities.
Can I, can I, members, thank Mr Bailey for his patience and for answering our few questions. Oh, no, Douglas.
Yeah, my second question is similar to what councillor Belbin asked in terms of Friends of, so in Darnall, the High Hazel's Park, there's a Friends of group. I think in the past they have applied for funding separately and that they may even have their own bank account. Does that impact or affect the account? Because I don't, I don't, I can't see any of the funding which they've done separately on the accounts. Are they kept separate or are they part of this?
Yeah, often Friends of groups do have their own charitable status, so they do operate as a charity within their own, within their own right really. So all the expenditure, income and expenditure they will have got will go through their own financial statements and will not be shown within the High Hazel's Park because it'll be within the Friends of High Hazel's Park, for example, within their state of accounts.
Thanks. As you just follow on for the question of councillor Nowes, it's important to identify those other accounts which do exist but which haven't been brought to our attention. Just in terms of the scale, can you tell us how many of these charities there are in total in addition to the twelve that are listed in this, approximately even if you haven't got the exact figure there?
So there's three other accounts which we record the income and expenditure for, but they fall below the twenty-five thousand pound threshold this year.
Right, just three, that's helpful to know. And the question of governance, so thanks for picking up the issue about the trustee's sole trustee, recognizing it's the councillor's sole trustee. The other question we raised in the pre-meeting was the query about the leader scheme of delegation, because that's still written in, I think erroneously to some of these accounts. Is that also going to be picked up and if so, we're having a reprint of these before they're signed off? Is that going to be included too? And actually, I realise that probably applies only to the accounts ending the third first March twenty twenty-three, but for the year before, it would actually have been correct. You're nodding, so I'll take that as, yeah, we'll get that sorted. Thank you very much.
Sorry, can I just check, can I thank Mr Bailey though? Thank you, Mr Bailey, for your time and your patience.
That's okay.
And thank you for your work on the examination for us.
Okay, thank you and see you next year.
I think we're done with you, yeah.
That's good. I've got, I think, two more questions, but I don't think they need Mr Bailey for that. So that's quite right. I just want to ask, I was just looking at, yeah, just the overall, thanks for the slides, so I hadn't seen these before, but I think they're really useful. Can we agree as a committee they could go on the website with the committee papers for reference? It's a really helpful explainer. Just would have looked at the slides before. Can I just check, are you saying that the bottom line, if you like, is that the council subsidises all these charities by making up the income shortfall out of the council's own revenue budget? And that applies to each and every one of these here?
Yeah, that's the case. So the slide that it pulls out the different subsidy for each of the different parks, that kind of shows the council contribution, some of its capital, some of its revenue, but a lot of that's provided with the maintenance through the park service maintenance department through the upkeep of the park.
It's just an important point to recognise where the charity will be if it didn't have the council's support there. Okay, so the final thing is I just, we're looking at the Hillsborough accounts because that's kind of topical at the moment. The one thing that I did want to ask about is there's, in the twenty twenty-two accounts, there's a massive drop in, sorry, massive rise in income. So rise in income for charities usually good, but there's an extra half a million pounds has been put into that. I'm looking at page two hundred and nine, so we're going for two hundred and forty-four thousand in the year ending March twenty twenty-two to seven hundred and forty-one thousand the following year. Have you got some detail what that is? There's a big increase in income to the park. Is that to do with tram lines or what?
Yeah, and I think that's, it's slightly different how charity accounts are prepared. So the income expenditure is different to how you'd see the revenue accounts for the council, for example. You'd see the in-year position and the capitals kind of separate because the amount that's been spent on capital expenditure was significantly more in the year. So there was quite a large scheme of works that happened. So some of that was due to footpaths and drainage, which was four hundred and thirty-four thousand, which is the majority of that half a million that you're talking about. There's also been the installation of the all-wheel track for, with, for use of the community by British Cycling, that was two hundred and sixty-eight plus works to the library entrance as well. So there was a significant amount of capital expenditure and because the income went into the charity within the year, that was all included in that income figure, even though the expenditure figure will not show that full amount because the asset is then capitalised and only a proportion of the depreciation will be recognised within the expenditure figure within the year. So that's why it looks slightly different to what you'd normally see within typical financial statements.
Okay, so it's largely capital expenditure, okay, yeah. And where's that income come from then? Is that just out of the council's revenue or capital budgets or is it from anywhere else?
Some of it is, so the two hundred and sixty-eight K is from British Cycling. Some of it has come from Sheffield City Council contribution and I'm not.
For the library entrance, that was from Heritage Lottery, capital funding grant.
Right, yeah, thanks, that helps. Okay, thanks. Any other? Yep, Richard?
Thank you, Chair. Looking at the Western Park accounts, this might just be a quirk, but the tangible fixed assets haven't moved year on year. Now, typically, I'm not an accountant, so I don't know what I don't know, but shouldn't there be either some form of valuation increase or depreciation of fixed assets?
So I think the last revaluation for the tangible fixed assets was about twenty fifteen. So the fixed asset in this instance, it relates to the Western Park Museum. And because it's judged as a heritage asset, that isn't depreciated over time. But as Jane's mentioned before, we are going to look to get all our fixed assets revalued in the coming years. So that's when you'll see a change to the large figure that you've seen in the accounts currently.
The report, if we've all finished any comments from members. So can I, can I thank the officers again for their work on this? And it's nice to know that it's been recognised by the examiner as we should recognise, as he said, that it's quite a bit of an improvement in how they're being presented, but it's always good to improve. There's the recommendation on page thirty-eight of the report that we note the accounts and the outcome of the auditor's independent examination and that you approved me to sign the statement of account, the trustee's report and the letter of management representation with some typos and dates and the changes to the representation letter, which I don't know actually if everybody's seen, but when we had the pre-meeting, I was picking up on the point that, which was explained, that I was being asked to represent for each and every one of you individually about what you'd done or not done. Didn't think I could do that because the council is a trustee. So it's, so the wording's been changed to reflect the fact that, you know, we act collectively to discharge the duty and we rely on officers as well to tell us things when we ask them questions. So it's just an amendment to do that. So are we, are members all agreed? Oh, sorry.
I think so. So can I just check, the three areas that we're asking for in additional comment on are, one was the nature of the trusteeship, two was the correction to the High Hazel thing where there's a wrong paragraph inserted, and three was the incorrect reference to the leader scheme of delegation. We probably need to be specific about it. It's those three additions that we, does that seem right?
Unless it's a typo, there's one of them has got councillor Lodge's name on still and there's a, there was a little bit of twenty twenty-three for the change to the committee system and twenty twenty-two is the correct date. So I assume you've picked all those up. But with that change, members happy to agree. I see no dissent, so that concludes item eight. So we're now on to item nine, which is the lease of the cafe at Firth Park Sheffield, page three hundred and fifteen of the agenda pack. And Ian is writing, is expected to present the report. There is an excluded item on this report, but I don't think members are minded to go into that here. So Ian.
Hi, I'm Dave Rice, I'm one of the, one of the business managers within Parks and Countryside. Okay, so what we'd like is a two-year extension to the current arrangements at the cafe at Firth Park. We'd do this via a tenancy at will with a mutual agreement from the current operator, really to carry on business as usual.
Thank you very much, nice and brief. There we go. Any questions from members? Comments, Fran?
Not a question, but yes, I will make a comment about it. So I think the proposal here is to continue the lease for another two years to the current tenant, Hillary. This is a cafe that's in the park within my ward, so I do know it very well and I really couldn't let the occasion of this go by without really acknowledging the fantastic work that happens at this cafe. It is so much more than just a cafe and why I'd really encourage the members of the committee to support the extension. I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. I think Hillary, who runs the cafe, did post about this meeting coming up on social media and some of the comments that came back really show what a fantastic resource it is. So if people don't mind me just quoting those a little bit, one of them says, Hillary and the team were a lifeline to my elderly parents before they passed away. The cafe made sure they had at least one hot meal a day, not to mention the love and support of the staff. Another person commented that the cafe in Shawstark Centre were a lifeline to me when I was going through postnatal depression with my first child. And another one, having two boys with complex needs can make it particularly difficult to find places accepting and understanding, but Henry's Cafe always is. And I really wanted to highlight those because this, as I say, is much more than the cafe. And I think as we go forward, I know that Hillary is planning to retire in a couple of years, so the extension of this lease is really about seeing the cafe through to that, through to that position, but also giving us the opportunity to kind of prepare and make sure that we, when we are looking at the next tenant of the cafe and the next occupier, that we get someone who has been as caring and the team that has been as fantastic as Hillary's has been in looking out for the local community. As I say, this is not just about how many covers you can provide and how many meals you can get out. The team really do look out for the people in that area and in an area like First Park, it's really, really needed.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, could I just, I mean, you've almost talked it through, Fran. This is, the building as a whole is a wonderful example of a multi-use community asset from, you know, from looking after the children to other things and it's a real focus for the park. I think it should be an example to the rest of the city on how you do things. And the extension of the lease, albeit for a couple of years, yeah, absolutely, one hundred percent prepared to support that. I think it's just such a good building to have in the community. Thank you.
Douglas?
Yes, thanks. I was just checking exactly what's in the open part of the reports and what is in the closed part, so I don't see anything awkward. I mean, I'm going to say I'm very happy to support the grant to Hillary to keep running the cafe under a tenancy at will, which formally doesn't count as a disposal. So the question about whether this committee needs to give consent to it or not, but I'm happy to do so. So it's nice to be able to support an ongoing business that obviously does provide that support in the park as Firth Park Ward councillor can, Fran Belbin, has to say, thanks.
Yeah, so it's fair to acknowledge that there is, there is a financial element to this proposal, but it strikes me, I don't know it from what members have said, that this park cafe is providing things almost beyond, beyond value. It's providing a service to the local community that, as far as I can see, does fully meet the charitable objectives. Certainly, as Fran has highlighted, councillor Belbin has highlighted, improving the conditions of life for the said inhabitants, it certainly seems to be doing that. So I think members are going to be very pleased to endorse this proposal. So are members happy with the, with the recommendation, page three one six? So that's unanimous. Thank you. So that brings us on to Rose Garden Cafe update, page three, four, seven of the agenda pack.
So, Chair.
And the work programme, yes, yes, thank you. Well, I've maybe started and I've finished and people are moving, so I'll do, I'll do Firth Park and then we'll, I'll do Rose Garden Cafe and then we'll go to the work programme. I think you probably know to everybody in the room now, but introduction for the webcast and then away you go.
Okay, hi, so I'm Rebecca Nixon and I'm a project manager in the Capital Delivery Service.
Good afternoon, Nathan Rogers, Head of Facilities Management.
Yeah, okay, great. So we're here today to provide a progress update on the work that's been done by the representatives of the Rose Garden Cafe partnership. And this is a reflection of the work that's been done since the last committee meeting on October eighteenth. And just as a reminder, the approval that was given at that committee meeting was for us to go away for Sheffield City Council in partnership with the stakeholders, so Friends of Graves Park, the Save the Rose Garden Cafe campaign, to develop a strategy for the restoration and the refurbishment of the cafe, the Rose Garden Cafe. And as part of those works, we were to look at a framework for proportionate public consultation, establish funding sources to meet the structural remediation and refurbishment works, and also agree a strategy for public communication. strategy for public communication. So just to start with, what we're here today is to really just to provide that progress update. And also just to note that you'll be receiving a further report in March as well. So the background, I'll try and be quite brief. But yeah, the background to the report is the same as the previous report set out in October. And the initial steps that were taken, where our focus lay was establishing the partnership. There was some recognition, kind of recognition by officers that there was some reconciliation that needed to happen and a differing of opinions between the partners of the partnership. And also the importance of setting out on the right foot. So the first workshop we held in early November was about really, I guess, creating that initial space for kind of sharing our thoughts. And initially, we thought about what our aspirations were for the cafe. And actually, Friends of Graves Park, Save the Rose Garden Cafe campaign, Bruchkitch and her, the existing cafe operator, and officers of Sheffield City Council, all had a shared aspiration at that initial meeting that we want to restore and refurbish the cafe. The next thing that we stepped to do was to try and kind of establish ways of working, where to meet, how we communicate, and also co-creating a kind of initial understanding and commitment to each other as partners. So we did that via a memorandum of understanding. And then the first document that we started to co-create was the application packs for the independent chair, which of course was noted as important at the previous committee meeting, and also to reach out for further partners. So that was those initial steps. And I think co-creation was quite a big step for us to kind of get to. And then the next thing we had to establish was kind of a process to review any applicants for the independent chair and additional partners. So we had no applications for any additional partners. And we have had an application for the chair. So as noted in the report, we were interviewing on January twelfth, which we did. And from this meeting, we're considering our options and it's looking likely we are going to extend the application deadline. But that's not to note that we're not progressing other items in parallel. And the partnership is in agreement that items do need to be progressed in parallel to get in that chair in place, which we all view is still important, of course. So looking to those items that we're progressing in parallel and the items that were agreed last time, we have got fortnightly meetings scheduled. And we have agreed that our next meeting on February second, we're going to look at two key items. So we're going to look at funding and delivery routes and also consultation. That's not to say that we've not progressed these items in the meantime alongside establishing the partnership. So just briefly give an update. So in terms of establishing the funding sources, the kind of background progress that's been going on, so Friends of Graves Park attended a community ownership fund webinar, which is one of the key funds that we're looking at. In parallel, officers have been looking to other precedent projects, including the Sheffield Street Tree Partnership and how they kind of deal with funds and look to get more funds. And also looking to projects where external grant funding, there's been successful bids. So we're doing quite a bit of background work to progress these items. And then the next thing that we've looked to do in the last couple of weeks is pull up funding strategy together. So starting to understand some of the difficult questions. So who will apply, what eligibility we have, how funds will be managed. And also this conversation links through to, I guess, the role of the partnership and the decision-making process. So we're starting to deal with quite some challenging items, but acknowledging that our overall aspiration as a partnership and the partners within it is that we want to restore and refurbish that cafe. And then the next item that we will be addressing on February second is the consultation. And noting last time that councillor Bellbin noted that we need to look at doing innovative ways of doing consultation, which we've recognised as a partnership. And we're talking about how, briefly at our last meeting, how the consultation and engagement with the public needs to be varied, inclusive and accessible. Also, I guess importantly, to provide a way for the partnership to communicate with the public. So at the moment, each partner is communicating with the public via their existing streams. And actually, we'd like a way that we can communicate with the public together as a partnership. So that's something that we're looking to talk through and share ideas on our next meeting. Because it'd be good to have all, we're still looking for the public engagement to build on the petition, get into the detail on how we should restore and refurbish the building, what should be included, what extra benefit can we provide in these works, and how do we future-proof this building. And then a recommendation that wasn't highlighted within the report, but was raised by several members of the public and also by committee members, was identifying the cause of the lean in the wall and importantly, progressing the kind of structural solution for that item. And in our first workshop with the partners, it was highlighted again that that was something that we really needed to progress to enable us to understand the cost of the solution and move forward with applying for funds. So actually, at the end of November, we held a meeting. So there was Nathan and I with the S C C representatives there. Powerline was with us from Friends of Graves Park, as well as Ernest Bruin, who was at the last committee meeting. And then we had Chris Hill, who is the architect, working with Friends of Graves Park and also their surveyor, Alan Knopp. And we sat and we created a file note to work through the existing information for that front wall. And we noted down where there's any discrepancies and also noted all the different design solutions for that front wall item. And we came out of that meeting with a, well, I believe that we came out of the meeting with a shared understanding that there are different design solutions for resolving the front wall, which obviously, of course, come with different price tags and a different, I guess, yeah, design solution. And we agreed that the way forward was to appoint a conservation accredited registered engineer or a structural engineer with similar relevant heritage experience. So from off the back of that, we are now looking at appointing that structural engineer. And the file notes that we created in that meeting can be seen in the appendices of the report. It should also be noted, I think, that on, at the last committee meeting, Tom Smith committed to the partnership as being a way that we can be open and transparent. And he actually noted including ways that we procure. And that is something that we are trying to do here with this first item. So we think it's important to speak to the partners, to highlight the different procurement methods, but also ensure that the partnership has a role in creating the brief, for example, for that appointment of the structural engineer. So we're trying to kind of bring those transparency lessons forward. And then, I guess, the final conclusion is that we, yeah, we're still establishing the partnership and we think we've moved a pace with this, but acknowledge that we're still on with getting independent and the right chair in place. And we are progressing all the recommendations and actions that were listed in that previous report. I think what's perhaps not quantifiable or even tangible is that we, in that, so we meet in the Sycamore Suite at the Woodland Discovery Centre. And I believe, and I think Nathan believes as well, that in that space, we've created a space where people can share ideas but also challenge each other's ideas. So although that's maybe not written in the report and it's not something that you can say is progress, it is progress because it enables us to move quicker through those difficult items. And ultimately, yeah, get the restoration and the refurbishment of the cafe complete. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything to add, Nathan?
No, I think Rebecca's covered it. Thank you.
Thank you then, Rebecca. Any questions from members? Fran? All right, Sahira.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation. It sounds really positive. I noticed that you have a memorandum of understanding now between the partnership, which is really key. Did you say you, you did interview, but you are going to extend the application for the chair's role? Is that correct?
Yeah, so we've had a clarification from the applicant and we're reviewing that internally with the partners. But our current proposal is that following this clarification, we would like to extend to allow fairness for all potential applicants. So yeah, we'll be able to provide an update on that. But that's where we're kind of currently agreeing yet. So, yeah.
But that's not stopped the work. The work is still ongoing, is it?
Yeah, exactly. So we were clear and I think all the partners voiced it, that they didn't want appointing the chair to pause our progress on other items, as listed in the previous committee report. So yeah, we're progressing items in parallel on the forward plan, which we worked through as a partnership at the last meeting on January twelfth, enabled us to say, right, what do we want in the next meeting to be our priority items? And it was highlighted that funding, so that funding strategy and spending a large chunk of time on that alongside bringing ideas for consultation were our two priority items. So that's what we'll look at on February second.
Okay. And I think for me, it'd be useful to have some feedback from the partnership as well. I mean, it sounds really positive and it looks like, you know, you have moved forward quite a lot and you will be meeting on a regular basis, I think, which is really important. But having some type of feedback from the group in terms of how they feel things are moving on would be really positive for us as well. Thank you.
Bellwin, and then.
Thanks. It was really following on from what Sahira was just saying, because I think having the discussion workshop report in the pack, I think it's really good. It really gives that sense of what you were talking about in terms of starting to create that safe space. And with that meaning at all to denigrate officer reports, it's quite nice to have something a bit different to look at. So it's made me think a little bit about the relationship between this committee and the partnership and how we kind of go forward with that. And, you know, once we do have a chair, I'm not sure how often we're planning for things to come to this committee, but to hear directly from the chair, for example, I think it'd be fantastic. And maybe to have that direct relationship between the committee and the partnership. And I'm sure, you know, if they're willing to invite members of the committee to some of the meetings perhaps as well, I think that'd be a really positive step forward, rather than you guys, not that you haven't done a wonderful job, but that rather than you guys always having to report on this, it's what happened and that's what happened. We could make it a bit more direct.
Thanks for that. Just like, so you said in the report that there were no applications or expressions of interest for other partners. But how many expressions of interest and applications were there for the chair?
So we can say this, can't we? Sorry. I don't know. I just don't know. It's always a check.
Yeah, you can.
Yeah, yeah, obviously. So we had three people reach out and then one application.
Right. Thanks for that. Yeah. And the other one was just on the finances, because I mean, it says in the report, there's no financial implications for providing the update today. But obviously, there's quite a bit of work going on there. So thanks for coordinating that. What is the sort of ongoing financial costs? Who's meeting that? Because obviously, there's a lot of officer time being put into this for Graves Park.
Yeah. So the office's time that's been spent in terms of external commissions, we've not commissioned anything else external. So it's office time that's currently being spent. The care registered engineer, there will be a cost from that. And it's appropriate for that cost. It's eligible for the essential compliance and maintenance fund, which he talks about in the report. Thank you.
Right. Yeah. Thanks very much.
Richard?
Thank you. Ian. Yeah, I'm very encouraged by this. And two things particularly stand out is one, that projects are running in parallel and tasks are running in parallel, rather than waiting for one to finish to start the next one, which delays things. And also the fact that you've committed to fortnightly meetings. I think that's a really good step because, you know, I think the concern always is, oh, we'll get a partnership and momentum will fall off. But I think with a fortnightly meeting, I don't think that would be allowed to happen. So thank you for your report.
So, well, thank you. Thank you for your work on this. It's encouraging to see and hear and read that we are making progress. Cara and Dua is here from Friends of Graves Park for a different matter, but I'm sure as members, we would welcome some feedback, possibly at the next meeting framed either as questions or round the table. I think taking up Fran's suggestion alongside presenting officers is something we could try. And also, I'm quite willing to be involved, but then I feel quite close to the issue because it's in my board. I've gone about it a lot. So it might be better that someone else took that on as a different pair of eyes. And always, of course, we're in the hands of the partnership. So we don't want to be, I don't think any member wants to be sitting around the table when we're not particularly needed or able to contribute anything. But we remain equally willing partners alongside the people who are involved. I think it would be helpful myself personally if some of the other groups who have had an invite, it would be great to see them involved as well, because we hope this might provide a model for further work with the community. I guess the $64,000 question is, how close are we to getting some money, more money in the kitty and getting some work done? I'd be interested in that. A lot of work, but I mean, you know, getting the place fixed, if somebody wants to predict that. And I'd noticed, Caroline, you were waving in my direction and would members just like me to make allow, allow to make, I'm willing to do that because we're a bit fummel.
Just to very quickly say, the partnership is working as a partnership. The partnership is aware of everything that was going to be said at this meeting and broadly was agreed before it came. So this hasn't been done separately from the partnership. And Friends of Graves Park are very, very cautiously optimistic that we might be getting somewhere.
Members are very, hopefully speaking for them, are very, very, very happy to hear that. And let's throw caution to the wind maybe then as we go forward, if we can. Probably there's a rule against that. Right. Well, the recommendations are on page three four eight. We note the progress. Greeted receive a further report in March 2024 as we go forward. Note the further updates. Note the comments raised by members and see if we can weave those into how we go ahead. And thank you to everybody for the work so far. With that, is it agreed, the recommendations? Agreed. So that's unanimous. But that does bring us to the work programme, if I get things pressed in the right order. And this is going to be Amanda.
Thank you, Chair. Not a great deal further to add, although we did have discussion in our pre-meet around charities commission training, which obviously needs to be added into the, but the agenda pack was already published. And to note that previously, it had been mentioned about the Norton Nurseries update going in there. We do only have one planned meeting left of this year, and that's on the fourth of March. Thank you very much.
Any comments or questions or suggestions from members?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I mean, we did agree on the fifteenth of September to put Norton Nurseries on the work plan programme. Can we actually get it on the programme with not necessarily a date, but just so that it's there as a public record? Because I can't see it.
I was going to say exactly that in those exact words. Well, uncanny.
Well, uncanny. Well, the only other thing I had to chip in was, can we get next year's accounts on the work programme? Because we know we're going to have to do them. Somebody, not me, but somebody's going to have to do it next January. So I think that's stating the obvious to some extent, but we may as well have it there then, everybody knows. Anything else with that? We're happy to approve the recommendations. And, oh, yes.
Just to note, Chair, that you've just agreed as part of the last report to receive a report in March 2024 about an update on the Rose Garden Cafe, so I presume you'll be adding that to your work programme for the 4th of March meeting.
That, I think, concludes business for today, and thank members and members of the public now departed and officers for their attendance and hard work and reports. Thank you.